I will call this meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Julie, do you want to take our roll?
Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Stephanie? Not here. Angela?
Here.
Alex? Not here. Justin?
Here.
Jennifer? Not here. James? Here. Julie's here. Pete?
Here.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, so we have nine. All right, is there any public comment on agenda items? If a member of the public is attending via Zoom, they need to use the hand raise feature to let me know if they have anything they want to add. I don't see anyone in the room and I don't see anyone on Zoom, so we'll move on. Consent agenda, I'd like to postpone this until after the holiday music presentation. So I'd like to move on to that. And I'll turn this over to Maestro Beth Harvison.
Oh, yeah, me? Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was actually starting to lose my voice. So we are in three days heading to New York City to sing at Radio City Musical. Twenty-seven of us, there are twenty-four of us here tonight. We've been working on three a cappella pieces. It's a part of a program called Music of the Season at Radio City Musical. They ask people to come sing festive holiday songs. We open for the five p.m. show. It's just us. It's not another chorus. It's just this group. They walk up on the stage. They're announced. They sing three beautiful pieces. And I don't know if you've been, the Christmas spectacular with the incredible orchestra that plays. They actually take the music that we're singing and they open with like our opener. He'll kind of improvise on that and then he'll close us out. And those of you who went last year know how special it was. It's a great way to kick off the holiday season, but more than anything, it's meaningful learning. And I said to them in rehearsal, I said, I do this to them because I want them to have these things in their lives for the rest of them. So when they're old like me, they have these memories and this musical experience to draw upon, no matter what they do. So that's the best part about being a music teacher is giving them experiences to carry on. So we're going to open with one of the pieces that we're singing at Radio City Musical. It's tidings of comfort and joy. They probably recognize it. And then they begged me, I mean, I wasn't going to do the second piece, but they said, oh, can we, I think, John, you've heard them do this at the creek. They just loved it. So they said, can we please do them as well? So I hope you don't feel that you're countering me, but I'll start with tidings of comfort.
I'm sorry, Beth, before you start, can everyone make sure you've turned the volume on your laptop off? I'm hearing echoing over here.
Yes. God rest him, three gentlemen, let nothing you decide. He meant that it was supposed to be your voice for another Christmas. Oh, something in the world that you don't want. Oh, yes. I'm glad to see you. Brothers, brought tidings of the same. All the girls, all the boys, the son of God by name. Oh, tidings of comfort and joy, comfort and joy. Oh, tidings of comfort and joy. Oh, tidings of comfort and joy, comfort and joy. Oh, tidings of comfort and joy. Tidings of joy.
Tidings of joy.
Tidings of joy.
Tidings of joy.
Tidings of joy. Good tidings of comfort and joy. And then they'll do two other pieces as well, so. If you want more holiday music, we've got more of that. So this next piece we are not doing. They're doing it on a concert. And then, yes, I don't have an Asian part, but I'm going to accept that. I will, because this one just. Always be children that talk free. And my thoughts are running free. They might run swift, or they might run deep. But this water is not near me. Just a little bit from the down. Cross the rock and rock the ground. Been a little bit lost and a little bit found. Leaving town, hoping near that shore. Why are we so scared to search our centers? We may say it's all, but every door you went through. Find a piece of something inside you never knew. Keep moving through. We've had bad luck. Don't say we're not bad. We've been a cheap dog, we should have a star. And we've made hard dreams hard by the sun. Why are we so scared to search our centers? We may say it's all, but every door you went through. Find a piece of something inside you never knew. We've always been around in thousands of ways. Some days we're blind, some days it's hard to see. There's ways that we're certain, there's lessons learned by the green. See you breathlessly. Please don't be so scared to search your centers. Life won't see its worth, because every door you went through. I could be something inside you never knew. Keep moving through. Believe it's true. I know that you keep moving through. We've met all change of the little green. Thank you so much. So we'll move out of your way. We wish you a happy holiday season and we have a concert next Tuesday night. So please join us. We have a lot of music. So we'd love to see you there. We have an a cappella group performing, sorry.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
How does the school group get invited to Radio City?
So last year I found the program. I just did some research because I wanted to do something with the kids during the pandemic. And I found this program at Radio City. And then I had to send in the tape of the kids singing. I had to send in a video of the kids singing. Sent that to them and they said, you know, you're welcome to come and sing. So last year was tricky because it was, you know, the pandemic. We had to have proof of vaccination. They had to wear masks. It was really tricky, but we did it and it was phenomenal. So this year, I'm really looking forward. So of course, once you've done it, you're always kind of invited back if you do so. So, yeah, it's, and they get to experience the program afterwards, which is, you know, pretty special too, so. Yeah, it's a great day. I'm sure you've all been on field trips when you were in high school. And those are some really large learning experiences, especially in New York City. Anything that you do outside of school, that is a big deal like that. You know, it carries a lot. It carries a lot. And it's a big responsibility on their part as well. So they're representing the school and we have to be together and work together to get some pointy pointy.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right, let's do this.
My report is going to be cursory.
Yeah, I think you're okay, even if you don't get it. Okay. All right, we'll go back to item number C, the consent agenda. Does anyone? Oh, boy. Does anyone want to take the minutes of October 24 off of the consent agenda? No, I'm just asking about the minutes of October 24. John, you?
No, I don't want to take them off. I just, I just want to object to the the transcript of them.
Okay, so why don't we hold off on October 24 and let's look at November 14? Does anyone want to take the minutes of November 14 off of the consent agenda? All right, then we'll leave those on. They'll be adopted. The minutes of October 17th, does anyone want to take those off the consent agenda? Okay, so that leaves October 24. So, John, I assume you're going to make a motion to take. If you, if you want to revisit these minutes, I assume you want to take them off the consent agenda so we can discuss them? All right, so I'll take that as a motion to, well, a motion request to remove them. So they're off the consent agenda and we can now discuss them. So I don't know if everyone has those in front of them. I'm having the worst time getting my hands on the minutes. Here we go. All right, John, what are your issues with the minutes?
Okay, I feel that they do not fully reflect what occurred. The narrative is only one-sided. It erroneously concludes that my letter to Voices editor contained inaccurate information. It implies that I claimed to represent the board, which I did not. I am being deprived of a fair statement of facts and statements made at the meeting of October 24. And I'd like the transcript to somehow be attached to the minutes. I have a PDF of them, if that's acceptable.
John, I'm looking at these minutes to see what you see. You're talking about the letter to the editor. I details on the recent letter to the editor written by Mr. Bonamino, published in The Voices, that contained inaccurate information. So what do you believe was inaccurate? What do you believe wasn't inaccurate? What do you? In your letter to the Voices, you said that the committee, the FNO committee took a vote and by a vote of, with three people opposed, they voted down considering the request for for us to spend money on a study that had been presented by Michelle Gore's group. They never took a vote. So what do you think is inaccurate? What do you think is accurate about saying they took a vote when they didn't take a vote? I was at that same meeting. I don't understand what your concern is.
You asked, keep one of us adding it to the minute, adding it to the agenda. Any of us voted no? More of us said no, and you said yes. In my mind, it's not a vote where you want to.
It was never put to a vote. Simply, I asked, I asked to add it to the agenda and three people raised concerns and objections. And I withdrew my request to add it to the agenda. There was never a motion made, much less a vote. You represented that there was a vote. You should not have represented that. There was no such vote. But I don't know, maybe we need, we need to wait for the next FNO meeting to look at what their agenda says, what their minutes say. Maybe we ought to keep this off of consideration until we hear from FNO. Because I haven't seen those minutes. I haven't been into meetings in a while because of my being, you know, ill, so. But I mean, either FNO took a vote or it didn't. If I'm correct, and FNO does not take a vote, then your letter is inaccurate. And my recollection is that we did not take a vote. And that was confirmed for me by a couple of people. So my recollection, I think, is correct. And I think your recollection of it is wrong.
Well, it was, it was proposed that we put it on the agenda. All I intended to state in my letter to the editor was that there was no the FNO committee never appropriated a request for funding or?
John, you're wrong. The FNO committee never considered whether they would consider the issue. They, they, they never considered it. They didn't, they didn't say, no, we're not going to entertain this funding. They just never considered it. It never made it to the agenda. So you're, you're, you're saying that there was a vote taken on. It was incorrect. But I mean, if you want to wait for the FNO minutes to come out, we can wait for the FNO minutes. But if the FNO minutes don't reflect a vote, then I am correct. You were incorrect. And I think that's really all it comes down to. I don't know that, it's nice that you did a transcript of the, of the board meeting, but I don't think it helps on this issue. This issue, the FNO minutes will control, I would think. Do we know when the, Alex is not here. Do we have somewhere on today's minutes when the next FNO meeting is scheduled for? Looks like it's December 5. So I would imagine that December 5, the FNO committee will adopt minutes for its meeting. And then we'll have the answer to that question. And I think that's what we should do. We should wait till that's adopted. I mean, do you have a problem with that?
Nope, no problem at all.
Okay. All right, so we'll move, we'll move on that issue. So we will not, is there anything else that you have an issue with on these minutes from the 24? So it's just that issue related to the letter to Voices?
The only, well, I, I feel that it's not a true reflection of what happened on the 24th, but.
Well, minutes, minutes are not a verbatim transcript.
It can't be verbatim. You're right. It's 53 pages.
I mean, you know, if you think there's something improper about the minutes being conclusory here on these things, this doesn't take any pejorative position. It simply, it simply states that an issue was raised. You had an opportunity to address it. Discussion followed. And it's, and it puts out what my parameters are for members acting individually, committee members acting individually. And we took no action on that. All right, well, I guess we'll have to wait for FNO's minutes and then we'll, so why don't we leave this on the, let's take this off, leave this off the consent agenda and we'll act on it at a future meeting. If there's no objection. Okay. Updates on COVID-19.
So not much to report, other than our current numbers. Again, we maintain very low COVID cases over the last two weeks. And again, Ally O'Hara reports to the state on these numbers. So she, she provides those to me on a weekly basis, actually. Booth had zero, both staff and students. Burnham, one staff member, no students. Chapag, zero. And WPS, two staff and one student. So there was a total of three staff and one student over the last two weeks. And also I did take the time to research the RSV and the flu cases in our district. If you recall, that was a question by a board member at last meeting. So Ally did solicit the information from all of our school nurses and found very few, if any, flu cases and two known cases of RSV over a month ago. Nothing has occurred since with RSV. So while there is no formal collection of any of that information, the nurses do speak, as you know, to families. And that is the most raw data that we could get for flu and RSV. And that's our best gauge. And so we are okay at this point. Of course, like many other districts, we are monitoring that. Because I, you know, you see it in the news every evening and it's, you know, there is an uptick. But until it really, you know, starts to uptick here and impact us negatively, thus far it has not. So I wanted to just give you an update on that. I also wanted to make a point. We had a community member reach out to us just today about sharing. We have shared, as you know, dates for the vaccine clinics. I've shared that. I know school nurses have shared that. And the point that was made that, you know, is this kind of, we're sort of ending COVID, according to the, to the community member. And, you know, are we simply just kind of keeping all of this in the forefront unnecessarily? It will. And as you know, I've been suggesting myself that we think of taking COVID off the agenda as it stands in the future at some point. But I do think families still should have access to where clinics might be held. There's no mandate there. There's no message there underlying. But I think, you know, and I hope you all agree with me that that's the least we can do. So where clinics are, I mean, why not? Why not offer that information? Things change. People's opinions about whether they should get vaccinated or their children are, you know, getting older. So there are a lot of reasons, a doctor's recommendation. So I do feel that I needed to make this statement because we did get a member. And maybe there are others that are questioning why we're sending that information out. And I just wanted to have a good rationale as to why we're doing that.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me that there will come a point in the not-too-distant future when we stop talking about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think a lot of it's going to depend on what kind of season we have this, this winter. I mean, I think if COVID, as they now seem to be predicting, we're not going to have a very big wave of COVID this, this winter. And it sort of disappears and becomes endemic like the flu, and I think it probably drops off our agenda.
I, I agree. But I do still think if there's information for the community to have, our nurses should send out like they do anything else. So that was my point on that.
I mean, people are still dying from it. And so I think it's something that we should keep on the radar until it appears we don't. And I think that will be seen.
So nothing else to report on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
The nurse results report also suggests what you should do to not get a cold.
Exactly.
And so why, why wouldn't we give this information to people if it's useful? You don't tell them they have to do it. We're just telling them this is, this is where it is and this is where you can get it. I don't quite understand why anybody is objecting to that.
It's, it's for health purposes. If you don't want to use it, don't use it. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why anybody would whine about that.
So other than that, there was nothing else to report, but I just wanted to share that information.
Well, I mean, perhaps it's, I think that's good. Perhaps it's something that we should, out of a routine basis, do refer to this, where you can get assistance with this, just as we would for the influenza. I mean, these are things that people should, you know, should know about. And but I, we may not be focusing it on it as COVID for much longer. That's just my guess. But I still think that both of these diseases, influenza and COVID, are dangerous, potentially dangerous for people, especially older people and people with immune compromised systems. So I think it's certainly bearsome mention. But, but perhaps not as much emphasis. We'll see. Okay. Let's move on to long-range strategic plan presentation. Ms. Stewart?
Okay. So as a committee, we felt it was a good time to update everyone on where we stood. And there have sort of been some delays, some intentional, but just wanted to bring everybody up to speed and kind of tell you all where we are and what our next steps are. So we had a plan in place. The last plan we had was put in place in 2012. I think a few people here may have participated in that process, but that was through Education Connection. The lead person on that was Jonathan Costa. And that plan was in fact a five-year plan, which expired in 2017. So it's been some time since we've actually had a plan in place. So where we started as a committee was interviewing, we interviewed three different possible consultants to help us. We ended out choosing the Partners for Educational Leadership. And we came to the board at that time and explained why we chose them. They were highly recommended, sort of the Cadillac of all. So we did in fact hire or sign a contract with them in July of 2021. The fee was $47,500. And the key person that we've worked with all along is Dr. Richard Lemmons, who's the executive director. So back when we presented initially, there was some pushback as to why we actually need a long-range plan. And I was pleased at our last committee meeting that Pete said, well, you can't steer a ship if you don't know where you're going. And so there are some maybe obvious reasons why we need to have one. But the bottom line, and you can read all these yourself, but the bottom line is that we want to benefit the students. And that's what ultimately we're doing this for. And we certainly didn't take the investment lightly. It's a lot of money to spend, but we feel it's well worth it. And once we get to the endpoint of this, you'll see why. And once we get to the endpoint of this, you'll see why. So we began by gathering data. And again, this was led by our consultants, but the committee was involved with figuring out the questions, the format, et cetera. We started with written surveys and our constituents were wide. Students, community members, administration, staff, teachers. And I remember Richard saying that he figured we'd get about 400 responses, but in fact, we got 555. So well above what we anticipated. And what was also of note was that 52% were actually people in our communities, but they did not have a school-aged child. And he felt that was sort of unusual. But for those of us who live in these communities, I think we know that everyone seems to be interested and cares about the education of our kids, whether or not you have a student in the system or not. So that was sort of an interesting piece of information. So when we did the data gathering, which was an online survey, we got information about who people were. And then we had a forced ranking process, which I felt was very helpful, especially for community members who wouldn't have just been able to say, yeah, this is what's important to us. It gave them sort of context and an ability to say what we're good at, what we need to improve and so forth. And then we had open-ended opportunities as well where people could write in how they felt and what they wanted us to know. And then the last piece of this was the actual focus groups. And I think all Board of Ed members were in one of those focus groups. Most of them were on Sunday and I remember it being high football season. But again, we had a really good turnout to those focus groups. And from there, we took all of the survey data, the focus group data, and we consolidated them and started looking at all that information as a committee. I think other people like Greg joined our committee at that time to see all of the data. The next step was to take all the data and synthesize it. And we initially came out with six strategic goals. Everyone felt like six was really too many. So after that, Richard and Megan at the time worked on their own to consolidate the six goals down to four. We also were careful that the goals were in alignment to the vision and mission that the school already had in place. And in fact, we did. And we also felt it was very important that the goals were not what I would call ed you speak, that they were things that the community could relate to. So we could go back and everyone would understand what we were trying to do. So the four goals that we have worked hard to come up with, and I know this looks perhaps easy, but for those of you who have ever tried to write goals, it's not all that easy. But the first and most obvious one is powerful learning. And that is really what we've always said is we want to be the number one district, perhaps in the state, and without premier educators and powerful learning and individualized learning, we can't get there. The second goal, family and community engagement. And this came out pretty strongly in the focus groups where the community felt that we don't do enough here to engage them. And perhaps that's because we don't have a football booster club and we don't have other things that bigger schools have. But I think some of that is now changing with agri-science. But in any case, that was something that the community felt was important. Diversity, belonging and well-being was something that I think surprised a lot of us, that so many people in the community felt that diversity was something that we really need to work on and focus on. And the goal itself says ensure that all students of all backgrounds feel welcomed, valued, safe and supported as members of the Region 12 district. And that word safe, there's an asterisk there, that was added this summer when the administrators got together at their retreat. They talked about the goals. They felt very comfortable with them, but they really felt strongly that the word safe was missing. And so the committee worked to pull that in, and that's where we pulled it in under Goal Three. And then finally, innovation and delivering value. And this is where we combine two things that are sort of different, but creative programming, advanced learning, and drawing families into the region and also doing it in a fiscally responsible manner. So it was sort of interesting that fiscal responsibility didn't show up too much in the surveys, but we felt strongly that it's come up enough through the years and it is important and we want it to be in there. So those after much work and deliberation is where we feel the four goals are. Everyone on the committee feels comfortable that these are good solid goals that really don't need to be changed. But the next piece of this is perhaps the most challenging and that is the implementation part. So defining measures and metrics are really important. There has to be a way to look at continuous improvement. We need to know how often we update and review them. And I think it was Lori who said that this cannot become stale and it cannot become a relic. So our nightmare as a group would be that we go through all this work and it sits on a shelf. And we don't want this to sit on a shelf. Obviously, we want this to become an important part of the culture and what happens down the road. So we have started, you can go to the next slide, Ben. We've started on the implementation. And we have measures and metrics. They're in rough draft form. And we feel fortunate that Richard Lemmons, even though a lot of time has passed, and part of that was because of Megan's leaving and bringing in a new super and so forth, but he will continue to support us through this piece. And it is included in the original contract, so this won't cost us any extra money. We also feel it's important for the new superintendent to participate in this part. We think we will have a plan in place by late spring. And it's important to know that, again, this is not a static process, that this will be a plan that will evolve over time. So our next steps as a committee will be really to look at the measures and metrics. And I feel strongly that this is more of an administrative function than it is for community members because they have to know how to measure these things. But that's where we are and we feel like we can get to the end by late spring. And at that time, I think we would be looking for the blessing in terms of a formal vote by the entire Board of Education. So you can wrap it up. I think we had one more slide there, but that's okay. It was just a thank you with the board members' names. So, and any questions that anybody might have on where we are and what we've talked about?
Questions? Thank you for the update. Yeah, no, no, this is, this is great. You know, keep, keep me in the loop when you would like this in front of the board.
Yeah. Well, the measures and metrics are, you know, that's the meat of it. And that's what everyone's going to hang their hat on and that's where the rubber meets the road. So that's important stuff and I'm hoping we can get, we have drafts. They're not quite done, but we're almost there. And I think it is important that Mark be part of that. So late spring, we hope to have a final plan in place.
That works well.
Okay.
Excellent work. All right. We'll move on to reports and recognition. First, I want to thank you all for your, your good wishes of health that I've been receiving since I've had my recent situation and I'm obviously getting back. Here I am, not quite 100%, but, but I do appreciate everyone's, everyone's thoughts. I want to talk about football. And I'm going to steal a little bit of Lori's thunder here, not, hopefully not too much, but, um, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we decided to join this football co-op, Northwest United. And we, we knew that it was going to be an exciting opportunity for our kids. What we didn't know is that our kids were going to be standouts and that this group was going to go 10-0, win its division. And that's exactly what it did. It's undefeated and tomorrow night, they're playing in a, in a playoff game against Masick High School. And it would be wonderful if we could get out there and support them as much as possible. I will be there. I know Angela will be there. She's been at every game. And I'm sorry? It's, no, it's at Nanawog. But you have to get your tickets online. So if you are thinking of going tomorrow at 6:30, the game starts at 6:30, contact either me or Angela and we'll be able to get you the, the, the online signup to purchase tickets. They are $10 for, unless you're a senior, in which case they're five. So no, I think they're five, five for seniors and students. And then $10 for the rest of the general public. I was too embarrassed. I bought a $10 ticket. So but even though I might have been eligible for the, for the less. Oh, it's 60. See, there you go. I'm long past that. So, okay.
Is it possible to send the link just to everybody on the board?
Yeah, I will try. I'll do that. I have it on a text. So I'll see if I can send it. We'll get it sent out. All right. Well, I'll make sure we send it to everybody on the board. I'll try to get that link out to you. I mean, this is, this is a big deal that they did so well. It's such a big deal that they actually got a shout out by the, the head coach of the New York Jets, Robert Sala, at his press conference the other day, you know, after the Thanksgiving games, he, he gave a press conference. He gave a shout out to this league and talked about how this team has done so well and that they have the first female head coach in Connecticut athletics history. So, and, and the coach is going to be receiving all kinds of awards and I'll leave that, I'll leave that off for, for Lori to talk about, but this is a big deal, guys. I mean, we really went in there and with a few kids, five or six kids that we have on the team have just, have just been great contributors to a wonderful effort. So we're excited for them and be rooting them on tomorrow night. I, I know that Megan Bennett is sorry she couldn't be here for it, but this will, this will be a great, this will be a great thing. So. There you go.
Are our kids, meaning the Chapag kids, are they regular players?
So Ryan said a lot, they're lying backwards and play as offense and defense. Reed is a running back. He also plays offense and defense. Maybe they, even the varsity kids, maybe they play offense and they play, at least second. With Nathan, you know, five different schools and so diverse and kids have really just come together. And we, Nanawog is against our archrival for most days. And now the quarterback for the Nanawog team, a kid named Roden, he's a phenomenal quarterback. He and Reed are like perch and roo on basketball. Now all of the newspapers are calling them the back of hero of Reed Roden. And so I looked at the two of them last week and said, what happens over and basketball starts again and they just sort of keep getting the subtle, bland and lax. And so it's nice. It's amazing. It's just, it's like, we get one, they're someone who holds them, they're each a time. A grinder for them and they go on and waiting, a grinder and a gatorade and snapback and every single hit, thank you. There's some pushing, they're, they're just off the point. You see some of them riding power, two and strong, fast, every single piece.
Well, there you go. No, you know, again. But I, I think, I would suggest that I think we have achieved what we set out to do, which was to provide yet another opportunity for kids here at our school. And I think it's been a good, I think it's been a good experience, a good program, and we should be very proud of them. So in any event, there'll be more to come on that tonight. The, the last thing I want to, I want to touch on is, you know, when, when Megan left, we knew we were in, we were going to be in trouble. We were going to be heading sideways and things just weren't going to go well. And then Dr. Lori Rodriguez stepped up and said she would join us. And in her interim superintendency, it has been just really a magic thing that you've done. You have managed to keep us moving forward. You've managed to keep this district in a level of excellence that we had become, started to become accustomed to. And I don't know what we would have done without you, Lori, because you really, you really did an amazing job and you, you have, you have staff that are behind you. You have a district that's behind you. And I know this has been an interruption of your life and, but we cannot thank you enough. There's just no, no thanks that are sufficient for, for what you've done for us. We, we are just in, in good hands. And this is going to be probably the last meeting that you're, you're going to be here presiding over. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I know you'll be happy to get out the door. You've had about enough of me, I can tell you.
No, it's been my pleasure. But I just wanted to start my report first with personnel, but thank you for that. That was lovely. Just wanted to start with personnel appointments. Steven Crowe is our new custodian, part-time at WPS. And that starts tomorrow. And then we have the retirement of Connie Ho, who is the assistant to the director of facilities, as you know, at Central Office. On a personnel note, she will be sadly missed. She's done a great job. But we wish her well. And then a transfer, we have Allison Giselle will be the new secretary to the principal at Booth Free School, and she is moving from her role as paraprofessional. So she's quite excited about that in the same school. And moving on today, S V S hosted two separate assemblies, and I think I put this in one of my Sunday highlights, two separate assemblies for middle and high school with Scott Driscoll. And Scott Driscoll has visited Chapag before and his message focuses on cyber safety and digital citizenship. And for example, he talked a lot about, I was talking with Don Shells earlier today, a lot of his focus is not only just on cyber bullying, but even little things like the kind of privacy settings that students should be aware of and their presence on social media and what impact that could have when things get out there they didn't really intend to let out there. And they're just being hyper vigilant and mindful about, you know, their presence on, on the internet. And also cyber bullying and how that has become such a major issue today for so many and, and what their impact is if they take part in it or if they're the victim. So he did a really wonderful job. And he is presenting or presented, I should say, to the parents this evening right here in the auditorium. So he does a, a really wonderful, I've seen him many times. We had him in other districts and he's, he's one of the best and really had the kids engaged and thinking because a lot of times students don't really think. It's, it's a lot of fun and they, they're on their phones and on the internet so much, but there are, there are consequences to some of those things I hadn't even thought of. So he did a great job. On December 16th, S V S students will take part in a one-hour community service project, and this is something they do. S V S students, as you know, need 30 hours of community service as part of their graduation. So they're going to work with their advisory teachers. So every student who is present and participates in the project will receive one hour of community service. And so December 16th is also the evening that some of this comes out. You'll hear about it in open house as well. And that's for our current eighth graders. So they'll hear about the community service and about graduation. And also open house for other sending towns, not just our own students. And they'll get to visit and hear about all the programs and the wonderful offerings that we have here at S V S. We also had a special, well, you already took my thunder on this, but just to piggyback on what Mr. Kava said, the head coach of the Jets, Robert Sala, gave our head coach, Jennifer Garzone, a shout out during his, he has weekly press conferences. And again, the first female head coach in Connecticut history for leading a high school team, a 10-0 record, also a Connecticut Technical Conference championship and a spot in the C I A C playoffs. But I have something you didn't have. We have a video clip of that. So.
I left you something.
You did. A little something. It's, it's brief, but it's pretty cool.
The Northwest United Workhorses, they're in. Yeah. We're recognizing the Northwest United Workhorses, they're in Connecticut. A co-op program made up of five different tech schools. Their coach, Jennifer Garzone, is the first female head coach to win a varsity game in Connecticut history, but not only that. They're undefeated and won their conference, so best of luck to them in the playoffs.
That's cool, right? So congratulations. Okay. Congratulations to Jennifer and the entire team. Really, we're so proud of them. And finally, this is my last official Board of Ed meeting with you all, as. Mark Goslin Jr. will begin on December twelfth. We've had. Already some wonderful conversations and a, a plan to transition those first two weeks he's here. And he will start on December twelfth, which just happens to be another board meeting, so he will, he will be in this seat. But I just want you to know, it's been my pleasure to, to return to Region Twelve, just. And to be reunited with the wonderful staff, students and families here, and. It's just such a wonderful community and I have no doubt that it's just going to rot, to grow. And become really a model of excellence in the years ahead. You just have some wonderful people here and I will miss everyone. I, I said, they said to me, aren't you really excited? I said, no, I am. But I will miss everyone. It's been a really wonderful, almost five months, so. So I thank you all. And for your support as well. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. John, do you have a treasures report for us?
Nothing on the financial front, but I'd like to thank Lori as well. For any time I ever requested anything, she always got right back to me and thank you for that, and. I also learned that she's an Andrea Bocelli fan. And she's a kind soul.
Going to see him.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports. Justin, curriculum and educational programming, you can tell us about your great meeting tonight.
Okay, yeah, so we just had our meeting tonight. Before I get to what we talked about, I'm going to plug the plant sale. Which is December tenth on Saturday from ten to two. They have trees. For us, Mary, to look at and buy, so it'll be good, and wreaths. The first thing we did was had Tyler Krimians give us just sort of an update on. What's going on with AgSTEM, and we basically spent thirty minutes or so talking about some of the. New curriculum proposals. Basically, some of the main ideas include kids not being locked into any pathway. Creating two new courses where there were previously one course. And let's see. Listening to kids who want core signup, so that, you know, they, they get what they want. They get the courses that they want as a way to prevent attrition. Other goals for this, you know, restructuring of curriculum will help, it'll, it'll help the counseling department as well. Dr. DeBrito gave us so, just a very brief talk about some of the newer course offerings. And so in there, we were sort of talking about expanding electives, giving kids more opportunities to take classes that are of interest to them. And finally, we had a brief discussion on the new K through three reading legislation. Which I'm sure we're going to hear a lot more about in the future. The basic idea is that the state is requiring. Districts to choose between five different reading programs for the next year, but we have. Applied for a one year extension on that, so more to come in the future.
Okay. Very good. At advance, Joe?
I have nothing to report. Our next meeting is this Thursday.
All right, Alex is not here for F and O, but there, there's a meeting in December the fifth, so I think that he'll probably have a report after that. Julie, you've already talked about strategic long range planning. Do you have anything else to add? Okay, well, then I think we're done with committee reports. We'll move on to old business. The first item is policy number five one two oh. Meal charging, this is for, here for a second reading. We discussed it once. I don't know if anyone has any further discussion that they'd like to. They'd like to add concerning this particular policy. Questions, concerns? All right. We will then move on. We have no new business, but we have two action items, and one of them is to consider if appropriate, adopt policy five one two oh on meal charging. So do I have a motion to adopt that policy? Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All, yes, John?
Starts on January?
The meal charging policy would start immediately, but because we're still in the period of the state waiver. Students won't actually begin to pay for their meals until January one, so the policy wouldn't need. The policy won't be implemented until paying for meals begins again.
So I guess the answer is sort of.
Exactly.
It starts immediately, but practically speaking, the, the effect will begin January one.
Correct.
Okay, further questions, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. All those abstaining, please indicate that you're abstaining. Hearing no abstentions and no negative votes, it's unanimously adopted. So we'll move on to the second action item to consider and if appropriate, approve Mark Goslin Jr.'s signature authorization for Region Twelve bank accounts. I, I think what we mean by this is we're adding him to the bank accounts as a signatory. As the superintendent usually is, so is there a motion to approve? Authorization for him to be a signatory for all of the Region Twelve bank accounts?
So moved.
Your second. Moved and seconded, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. Seeing no abstentions or negative votes, it's unanimously adopted. We have an upcoming meeting of Finance and Operations on December fifth, Long Range Planning on December twelfth, and a Board of Ed meeting on December twelfth. Which will be, at which we'll have Mr. Goslin, you know, Dr. Goslin, well, I hope doctor, soon to be Dr. Goslin here. If no one has any objection, I would declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh three P M. Thank you all very much. See you December twelfth.